At this time together as we make the decisions of the county, Lord, we pray that you give us your divine wisdom. Help us to always do what's right for our constituents and what you would be pleased to do. We ask these favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good day.
Good day.
Mr. Wood with the tribe.
Please place a flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Please. We appreciate the presence here this morning and we'll move through our agenda as you have. The next item is approved by minutes that you received. Is there any changes that need to be made? If not, with your motion that you accept them as you receive. Your second, most of secondly discussed, means favorably, no saying aye, any objections, so forth. Uh, next item is leadership to cap. I don't think they're here this morning. Uh, but they have to rearrange their schedule. We'll move the road department, which is maintenance update person, that is, Row.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Give you a brief update, which you've already experienced from the rough weather the last couple of weeks. Have some road damage. It really is not too severe right now. We'll have more rain coming through, I think, this afternoon overnight and some again tomorrow. But we really have fared good through these floods. Doesn't matter where I am. I know years ago, this amount of rain in this period of time, it would devastate on our roads. Right now, we have three roads closed. I think Count is right, which is really, uh, it's not too bad. And two of those are the ones that we always have to close anytime we get much rain. Bridges are low and they get underwater pretty quick. But we've really done so good, I hope that maybe we get a chance to drain down good today before more rain comes in this afternoon and tonight. Big thing, I guess, tomorrow will be the wind. Ground is so wet, it's not gonna take much wind, start blowing a lot of trees down. So I expect we'll have a lot of problems with those tomorrow or night. We just have to deal with it as it comes in. Have not been able to do a whole lot. It's, uh, it's kind of work in the rain. We've had to do emergency, uh, kind of repair, repairs and things like that. But we have not got to do a lot of just general maintenance. We were able to send out two of our patch trucks this morning. We're in the process of getting our trucks cycled out and have one patch truck that we are swapping over. We're gonna be mounting back on the new truck, uh, this afternoon. And then we'll get one, I want to say, sent out today unloaded, we'll start taking it apart and getting some repair work done on it, we can swap up. Don't have all our new trucks delivered yet. We have seven trucks so far. So I'm hoping maybe within the next week to get all of our new trucks in so we can get those swapped over. Auction's gonna be the seventeenth of March, so we're kinda running close on the time. That's about all I have for you. A little update. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Row. If you have a question, comment, or throw.
Just a comment. Uh, Mr. Row, I appreciate the help you're providing. You know, um, as you mentioned, you know, we've, we've been fortunate on, on the amount of bad situations that's been created by this, this room. And that's a testament to the good job that you have done and your crew have done over the last few years. You know, just a few years ago, as you mentioned, you know, I would've been getting a lot more calls and there would've been a lot of watchouts and stuff like that. So there's a lot of little things that go on during the year that helps these situations. And I realize from seventeen hundred miles of roads, it's hard to have all of them parked and we have hot homes and stuff like that. But all in all, it's, uh, we're very fortunate. We don't have any more roads closed. But just thank you, your crew, for watching that.
Thank you, Wood. What else? Mr. Row.
We have a bit of a personal. Drain each other great and that's, that's paid off.
Mr. Row, I, I did have one day, we're trying to figure out what to do then. It had been brought to my attention about this time last year, we had an incident down in Rusty Park. Cost a young man his life right back. Nick Matt's father works for the road department. And, uh, in the course of those events, I mean, it's always been an issue down there. Anytime it rains, it's a good amount. The bridge, you know, it's designed for that. And most everybody understands that. I don't know about barbells and different things like that. Some kind of safety mechanisms that we could put in. And the location where that's at and the design of the bridge is just not something that's easy. Putting in a clear span bridge, we're talking multi-million dollar project is not something that's, that's gonna happen. But what we are gonna do, uh, as recently as we had another fatality in the same location, the person who decided to drive across the bridge and the waters overflowed. And, uh, so what we're gonna do after several phone calls and several conversations with Mr. Mark Rowe, Mr. Row, Mr. Luther, the sheriff's office, and the state park service is, uh, I know for a fact that we are gonna put some gates up on the Cap County side. That should hopefully deter drivers from trying to cross that bridge when the water's over the top of it. It's my understanding that Jackson County also is, uh, is considering something along those lines. So we want to bring that to everybody's attention. And while we're, while we're bringing it to your attention, we then want to reemphasize that anytime that you're driving, when you come to an area of road where the waters are flowing that road, don't cross through there. That is dangerous. The power of the water can overcome you, can overcome your vehicle, and it's gonna cost you or that member of someone alive. Don't take those types of chances. Ever since I was a young man, we've seen signs and they say, turn around, don't drown. So take that to heart and, and, and trust us in this. Hopefully the mechanism that we're gonna put in place here in the near future will prevent us from having these types of situations.
This, uh, as you know, we've had two fatalities in the west, really just blew west in a year. When the park was open and there were park rangers down there, this was never an issue because they, we had given them barricades. They would look at the road and when they deemed it necessary, they would put barricades up over the road. And we still had people then that would go around barricades. We have had some people stranded out there. To my knowledge, I can't remember any fatalities prior to these two in the whole time I've been to the road department. We're, we're gonna have to do something. We have been monitoring that. Actually, my crew leader in that district was down there just a few hours before that. The water was about three feet below, uh, the road surface at the time he was there. He actually went back. Probably got there just a few minutes after this had actually happened to go back and see what the water, water level was then. Apparently it had really rained somewhere because it had come up, it had raised about a little over three feet. It had come up enough to get over the road. He said it looked to him like it was probably less than a foot deep over the road, which is not, uh, not near what it, uh, wanted to be. It is a bad situation. I sure am sorry about both of these things that have happened. We will address it. I think we're on the right track. We just need to determine, say, if we're to put them, what, how to fashion them and who's gonna be responsible for closing it and then reopening whenever they decide to.
Thank you, Mr. Row. Thank you. We have all that, uh, in progress now. Yesterday, our power was closed and barricades, which was worth, uh, where are that? And, uh, I appreciate y'all's willingness to work those and the park service to, uh, let this not happen again. Over the last twenty-five years, we've put the signs up, as you say, that barricades and, uh, there's some that can go around and then you see where happens.
Signs not placed very long for some reason. We don't want to steal the signs. When you go up there, steal the barricades. We've already, uh, just in last week, we've probably lost a half a dozen barricades and closed signs. I don't know why. I reckon a thief just likes to steal, so I guess he'll steal anything that he sees.
Thank you, Mr. Row. Go ahead, the first man.
All right. We, uh, have a guy I'd like to recommend to hire today. This will be the last of these four new positions. We posted these, I think, back in October. It's taken all this time to fill four positions, but I'd like to recommend Norman Price. Phil, this, this opening is in District Three. They'll be the last of the four new positions we'll create.
Thank you, Row. I believe this is your air, Mr. Wood.
I've come to defer to Mr. Row without my commitment to himself, because I really don't feel.
All right. Uh, you hear us, Paul, right? And actually, any questions that need to be, uh, further required? Your comments or your motion, honor. Say it.
Don't move.
Your second.
Second.
Most of secondly discussed. Means favorably, no saying aye. Any opposed, any objection? Thank you. Thank you.
So what I have for me, thank you.
Counsel on day, you have a date, Mr. King.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll try maybe quick. Um, a few things that are coming up. We do have a veterans breakfast social. It's every, uh, second of every even month, so that means this week on Thursday. But, uh, any veterans, all ages are welcome and their spouse. It'll be from nine to eleven and we'll have a full supper breakfast with it. We also have, uh, several different exercise things going on. I've heard me talk about dancing. We have to learn how to dance in the council making. We also have a Tai Chi class that started recently. It's been very, it's been very successful. We've had a lot of new people walk in the building and all, the only thing they wanna do there is Tai Chi. So they come once a week for that on Tuesdays, uh, from nine-thirty to ten-thirty and, um, do Tai Chi. And some of them go home and some of them stay and enjoy the senior center downstairs. Um, and if you're not familiar with Tai Chi, uh, it is, uh, it's a form of martial arts with no fighting. I guess it's the basics of it. It's a slow form of movement and balance and exercise. Uh, if you ever want to hear more, I can bring the guy that knows more. He can say more. Just let me know. We've also got, uh, speaking of our Tai Chi teacher, he, he comes and does this for free. We don't pay, uh, we don't have any money to pay and he just comes and does this out of goodness of his heart. Uh, we also have somebody that teaches, uh, a low-impact exercise class at the council on aging, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from nine-thirty to ten. And he also comes and does this for free out of the goodness of his heart. Uh, he's been really great for our community, uh, for several of our programs. Uh, he's done some counseling with some of our clients. Uh, he's a former Navy chaplain. And, um, he's also, um, done a lot of one-on-one with the clients on their goals for losing weight or for having that help their heart. Uh, he is a certified fitness trainer and specializes in senior fitness, so it's exactly what we needed. On the note of him monitoring people, he brings his own blood pressure box cup, puts it on them when he feels concerned about people. And he has taken two people to the hospital for, um, stroke level of blood pressure before class started. Um, and he kind of had to do an intervention with them because they didn't think they needed to go to the hospital, but were really glad he did. He's actually had some clients ask him to go to their heart doctor with them. Um, and he has done that and, um, so that he can listen to what the heart doctor says and then he can continue with the client in the classroom. Um, you know, tell them, well, your doctor, this is what they meant when they said this, or these are the nutrition things you need, you need to understand. So we're really blessed to have him. Um, we outbrewed the space downstairs. He would have up to thirty-five in a class and there's not much room downstairs in senior center. Um, so he moved upstairs. Um, it's a little bit difficult for some of our participants. We drive them in a van around upstairs, let them do exercise, put them back in the van and bring them around downstairs. Um, I think he's gonna start doing a mini-class for them downstairs because it was very stressful for the ones that have mobility issues getting in and out of the vehicle so much. So, uh, we're really excited. He's donating extra time for that. We've got a new exercise class that starts in all the senior centers in the county. Tarkok train is for that. Uh, they, it's called SAIL, which means Stay Active and Independent for Life. Um, and it's a balance and strength, um, class. Um, and it's designed for people ages sixty-five and older. All of them started this month. Let's say today is February's, what is today? February?
Eleven.
Oh, eleven, okay. Cross School started yesterday with their class. Um, five begins the twelfth. Ider started last week and Rangel's gonna start on the nineteenth. And all of them do that, uh, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from nine-thirty to ten-thirty in the morning. Uh, we're really excited about those and, um, we've had, uh, the Southern Torch is working on doing some, an interview with us. And I think we've got the Time Journal. And then we're working with them too, the Time Mountain News. Now we've got our prom is gonna be the last Thursday of March. It's gonna be March twenty-sixth from five to eight. We'd love to have you all there. It's a free event. We've probably got about a hundred and fifty signed up right now. That's not including the senior centers. They usually turn theirs in on the due date so that they've got everybody, you know, as many people involved as they can. Uh, but it will be, uh, we're gonna be partnering with the Will's Valley Recreation Center and we'll do it there. We're going to do a fifty-style sock hop. So wear whatever you want. Or you can wear, uh, puddle skirts and saddle shoes and whatever it is that men wore. Do you not know that part?
Mr. Wood, you have to try and off field that.
You have to be a part of our program, which means young ones can come too. Um, all of our dancers can come as long as they're an adult. And then when it comes to the general population, you have to be fifty-five or older. Uh, because fifty-five is the magic number at the Will's Valley Recreation Center, forgetting that. So yes, but, um, we've got a, Joyce Robinowitz has been working really hard on getting a lot of the decorations ready. And, um, Brendan Petrie's working on the food, but we did plan on having Coke floats. And if you don't want Coke, just have ice cream. So, um, I'll be one of those. Um, and we do have a possible sponsor that's gonna pay five hundred dollars to pay for that. It's free to clients and we have books still kicking. They're gonna be our band again. And we will have a live snack or supper. We'll have a little sandwiches or something informative. Last part, square dancing. If you've ever been interested in finding out what square dancing is, this is the month. You come to the council on aging upstairs. You have to be twelve or older. So if you've got kids and you wanna bring them, you can bring them. Um, but the, this is the month that new people can try it out. It's free. It's Thursdays at six-thirty. And we finish at eight-thirty. But, uh, if you're not familiar, I'm not the best square dancer. But what I can tell you is you have to listen and do. You do, you can walk in square dancing and you don't have to do a lot of dancing and movements. You're doing, you can walk while you do it, I guess. Not a lot of hip action or anything like that. Just, you can do it pretty straight. And I'm trying. My nine-year-old started last year. They allowed younger kids last year. And she's graduated and my parents have graduated and now they have a certificate and they can go anywhere in the world to do basic square dancing. So they, it's a progression of learning each month. Uh, but yeah, we'll be in it at six-thirty on Thursdays this month upstairs at the council on aging. And we're, the square dancers also are having a fundraiser. If anybody's interested, it's five dollars per person and it's a chili or soup dinner. It has a dessert and a drink with it. And you can purchase tickets from us, but it will be on Saturday, February twenty-ninth from eleven to five. So you can pop in for lunch or you can come for supper. Uh, and we do plan on having a band playing. Uh, it's gonna be like done by Jack Martin and his bandmates. I don't know the name of their band. I apologize.
We're all there.
Thank you. I did not recognize.
I play with.
I'm just going to play for you and I know that, I know a lot of the characters of people. But that's it. So call us. If you have any questions and if you wanna sign up for prom, call us.
Thank you, Mr. King. We appreciate it.
Appreciate the offer, but I couldn't square, I couldn't square anything.
I won't talk about that, that's why I'm glad, gee. Uh, we got a good time around here. I don't know if you see this serious. Next item, Sheriff's Office, HCCA training, uh, recognition. I asked the gentleman that completed this course to come today because I've seen the veteran HCCA who developed this program. I did develop this several years ago and, uh, it's, it's been a great, great asset to our county employees and to our, uh, correctional employees. And we have today, uh, with us Administrator Officer Bell, Sergeant, uh, Guinness, Chief Deputy Administrator Smith. They've all completed that necessary program and, uh, earned a certificate of, uh, completion of a National Institute of Jail Operations. Gentlemen, if you would please stand. We, we appreciate you all, uh, going through this program. Any judicial mind, first, uh, this, this is a great asset that you and your officer faction. We appreciate you taking the time, uh, to go through that and Sheriff's Office working with us. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. Next office, Sheriff's Office, person making. Sheriff Webber.
Good morning. I'd like to just take a second to say something about Mr. Row's here. He said he hasn't been able to do much lately. Well, I'm gonna say he's done a lot lately and we've seen it in a time of need during this rain and basically the vast that we've had. I witnessed, uh, Mr. Row and his people doing outstanding job. I actually seen Mr. Row standing in the pouring down rain working on the truck the other day to get it going. And, uh, a lot of good deeds goes unnoticed, but I will give credit where credit is due. I think he does have a standing job here. He is. And, um, also with that sense of public, immediately talked with, uh, Commissioner Westbrook. And, uh, as soon as we made contact, he was on the verge of finding a solution and making, making a difference in that area. And I appreciate that, his concern. Do not have much of anything today. All we have is a replacement for a resignation we had, a resignation this spring. We'd like to make a replacement for that full-time position with a higher, uh, tax release.
Thanks, sir. Any questions about that recommendation? If not, your motion, honor, request.
Motion, honor.
Your second.
Second.
Most of secondly discussed. Means favorably, no saying aye. Any opposed, any objection? Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Dan, please, Mr. Wood.
Dan, wait, one of us, one of our county transport vehicles was involved in an accident. We sent a, uh, column folk and, um, as it turns out, uh, the vehicle damaged the rear end of another vehicle. Belonged to a resident of District, uh, I guess it's District Two. Anyway, uh, it's really apparent that we are involved in this and, uh, I received the estimates for the damage and rebuke. Feel it's appropriate that we, uh, present these, this claim to our insurance care of residents.
Thank you. Guy, you make that a full motion.
So it is so.
Your second.
Second.
Most of secondly discussed. Means favorably, no saying aye. Any opposed, any objection? Thank you. Uh, sir, plus vehicle, they have worn this chart.
Uh, you can see that we had, we took theirs to the, uh, truck, plus theirs. Twenty-C, they were. We did it by wife, we did it by angel, we did it through my toe. You can see the, uh, toe between C and O, the big, the five hundred sixty one thousand. The toe taking the, the five hundred fifty-six thousand. I'm trying to pick it up back.
Yes, I do. Uh, let me say that, uh, and I'm gonna mention two people in particular who make this possible and they will blow this. Mr. Wood, Chris Burke, uh, and all of these commissioners, uh, we put this program in place to save our maintenance costs. And, uh, I just can't emphasize enough the savings that we have experienced in maintenance on vehicles since we began this program. Of course, we cycled them out. We did this year and, uh, if I'm remembering my figures right, Mr. Sharp, it cost us about five percent. So that's something about five percent to keep all these vehicles on the road. Uh, we had no downtime with them other than accidents like hitting a deer or something like that. But, uh, it, it's just saved us a tremendous amount of money. And, uh, credit where credit is due to these gentlemen that are around the table. Uh, Mr. Burke from Capitola, General Insurance, Mr. Wood, who also is in that area. And, uh, Mr. Westbrook on the emergency vehicles. And that's not leaving anybody out, but it's just saying that, uh, the program is working in such a successful way. I just want to thank all of you gentlemen for, uh, the hard work. Not only that, I want to commend the Sheriff's Office for their care of the vehicles. You know what I mean? Care of a vehicle, I mean, personal care. You know, when I have a car, I have to take care of the person like it is called a man. Well, these gentlemen have been, uh, so very cooperative in that area together with their, uh, road managers, through Mr. Row. Uh, they have taken care of these vehicles like they were owned. That's the reason they brought the amount of money that they did. And, uh, Mr. Packard on, Mr. Burke setting all this up. And so, uh, we have really come out on top in this program. I can't emphasize that enough. And the figures bear that out. So, uh, I just want to commend all of you. You go ahead, Mr. Sharp.
I'm lucky. I'm in charcoal, so it's, uh, the numbers we got are just better than what we expected and, uh, especially on chair stability. I was, I was a little nervous about chair stability because we've never done that before. And so with, uh, our plan over the next few years is about ten last year, uh, about twenty this year. We'll get up to twenty-five or a trickle here, there, and try to rotate that over here. That's a monumental effort to try to get to, to where we're, we're having, uh, vehicles that are dependable. And, uh, and so I, I think, you know, this program, the way it's working, I think we'll be able to do that. I'm excited about, uh, working the way.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Gentlemen, any questions, comments?
I got a comment.
Go ahead.
Let's listen to you. Give credit where it's due. The primary credit goes to Mr. Burke. Secondary credit goes to the personnel who work in the road department and do a fine job of managing costs down there as well. I'm simply involved in a little bit of oversight, a little bit of guidance, not day-to-day operations. They look at the insurance estimates and try to give some decent advice on that. There is the people who have pulled down employees to this county that deserve credit. Not those of us who serve the constituents. So, uh, but thank you for the comment. I just want to say that, right, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I appreciate it. You have come.
Let me also add.
Good.
You know, we started looking at this program a few years ago and we started slowly implementing little, little things to kind of see how it was going. And then last year, of course, we took a big jump in the big steps, especially when we added the sheriff vehicles into this program. And, uh, you know, it's not just the, uh, five percent, you know, it's, uh, it, it's the, uh, it's the, it's the depreciation also that we were losing by keeping vehicles for five or six years and putting two-hundred thousand miles on them. But it's also the appreciation that we were losing by buying the clean-jane work vehicles and work trucks. And so when, when resale time came, nobody really wanted them. Uh, and so when we made that transition, uh, to, to buying nicer vehicles, uh, higher trailer line vehicles, especially on the road department, we started getting, uh, the, you know, newer trucks out there and, and swapping those out and, 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 uh, I want to commend this commission, each one and the department heads, Mr. Row and, uh, Mr. Luther and, and Sheriff Webber. Uh, I can, I remember being in the meeting and somebody mentioned, uh, you know, if we do this, uh, it's gonna look bad on y'all elected officials because there's gonna be a bunch of new vehicles out there, nice vehicles. And people are, the, the public is not gonna see the savings. And so they're gonna assume that you're wasting taxpayer money. I, I just love them for what they're said also. And, and, uh, but not one of these elected officials hesitated in making the decision to go ahead and do this because they knew it was the right thing for, for the county and the right thing for the taxpayer money. So I'm proud to be part of a group that looks at things not according to how it's gonna affect them in the public place, but how it's gonna affect the people that they represent. So, uh, I want to thank all of y'all for that and, and just, just make that comment. Say how proud I am to be a part of this commission.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. You have come in.
I want to, I think they, they have done a tremendous amount of work. It's, uh, she, you know, is a, is an employee in this office. Her, her workload has really shot up, uh, with this program. Very much a point from her that she gets. She's, she's actually had a tremendous amount of workload for that. And, uh, appreciate all the work that she has.
Thank you. You have come. Uh, all right, Mr. Sharp, uh, you want to make the recommendation that we, uh, accept the vehicle.
Ever.
Go ahead. Sharp, that means that we have, that we accept the twin city. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Most of props secondly discussed. Means favorably, no saying aye. Any opposed, any objection? Thank you so much. Exact, what, thank you, man. Uh, next item on the agenda is the football recognition from the P B football team. Back. Mr. Westbrook.
I don't know. A parent, a proud parent reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and asked us to, uh, another way. Didn't ask us to explain to us. An accomplishment to have, to have a good place and, and, uh, I think we've kind of over it. Well, there, uh, most everybody's aware of it, that, uh, Most everybody's aware that five varsity football team is backing up championship after championship. And that takes a lot of attention. But five, five P-Wee football team, the C team, has fallen right along in their footsteps. And they had a ten-game regular season undefeated. And then they went out to Atlanta to play in a championship series, I think, which was four games, and they were undefeated. So they walked out of the twenty-nineteen season undefeated and champions in their, in their class. These are our six and seven-year-olds. I want to just take a chance, a second here to read the names off and then just recognize them and the coaches, and give them a hand. They asked us not to try to present any kind of bill go over board because they're going to have a skate party and give them some rings and things like that on their own. So we just wanted to recognize them, let everybody, let everybody know about their accomplishments. So the players are Trevor Lawrence, Jayden Patterson, Hunter Justice, Drake Garrison, Urban Southmore, Robert Hennegras, Justin Chastain, Jackson Echols, Carson, Casey Ridgeway, Mason Chrisberry, Wyatt Martin, Andrew Stiefel, Clay Chisenhall, Oden Pettis, and Logan Boy. And then their coaching staff was the head coach, Judge Stiefel. And he was, had some assistant coaches, Charles Garrison, Chris Harrow, Caleb Chisenhall, Chris Tolethrow, and Brad Rowell. So I'd like to just ask everybody to give these guys a hand on their accomplishments. If you see some of the boys out there at five, pat them on the back and tell them good job, and keep up the good work, and they'll be right up there with the varsity boys here in a few years. And attack another championship here out there.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. Before we conclude our agenda, Mr. King, if you're here. This morning, we, I owe the two hours delay, the weather was a relief for that. And we may very well do that again in the morning. Because, I'm going to let Mr. Cliff explain what may be coming in for during Mr. Cliff, what you kind of give to break the odds of what we already have in the next one or two nights.
I've probably briefed a lot of information to cover, but we've got some, some handouts if you're going along with this. I think they're briefings from Huntsville Weather. Basically, what we wound up, what we have wound up with is a series of eruptively severe storms. For two weeks ago, we began with flooding problem, and of course, that's when we, we lost the flood bucket. We continued to search for that. And speaking of, of that incident, I want to thank Mr. Westbrook, he was on top of it. Matter of fact, he is the incident commander for both of those incidents, the one last year. And this was well, I'm pleased to work with him as a, as a professional. During this weather, we also want to make sure that, you know, I want to reiterate what the sheriff said about Mr. Rolls and his crew. The road guys have done a magnificent job through all this, this working with us. They're, they're out in it. The volunteer fire departments have stepped up to bat. And of course, the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office has done a magnificent job in keeping us situational awareness. All of the local police departments, everybody in the, in the emergency response community has really come together, as groups say. We've worked on this for several years. But what you're going to see is there's, there's two different weather briefings that I have. I don't know that I've made enough copies for everybody, but basically, we had one series of slides come out last night at six. And the reason you have that is because this morning references yesterday. It says there's not been a lot of chances last, last briefing. So far, there's been anywhere from two to four and a half inches of rain for most of the area. Our gauge here, here at the activity building, registered inch and three quarters this morning. There was more on the mountain. I don't have all of the game greetings in yet, but somewhere between the twenty inch and three quarter and two and a half inches of rain fell yesterday. We also had a lot of support. We took the bus routes yesterday afternoon. We had the bus drivers identify any areas that were of concern to them. We put, put our staff, we put the Sheriff's Office staff, we put the road department staff out this morning checking those areas and found them to be, to be passable. Of course, Mr. Rolls, I'm sure you've covered what's closed currently. And chances are, we will be, be going back to close down because that, yesterday was the first round. Today, we've got a second round of rain coming through tonight, where we're expecting an additional two inches of rain. That's expected to begin this evening, somewhere for us in the neighborhood of about six P.M. With more flash flooding than most of aerial flooding. For those that don't know the difference, flash flooding means that life safety is, is of major concern. These are, these are where you get those sudden swells of water that can wash cars away, suddenly find, you know, water coming in your house. While aerial flooding is flooding, but it is not necessarily of life-threatening concern immediately. This is where you wind up with fields flooded, low-lying areas, but it is, it is a major concern. Right now, the estimated total for us is up to two inches. In these handouts, you will see a number of Tennessee River forecast. Just so you know, right now, we're running at two feet above flood stage on the Tennessee River. They are pulling water through Gunnerful Dam. But unfortunately, Wheeler is backing up, Wilkson is backing up to keep water out of Decatur and Huntsville. So they're backing up Gunnerful and, and Nickajaw. And so we're going to see, which means all of those tributaries, Town Creek, Yellow Creek, Soddy Creek, all of those are going to begin to back up toward us. Right now, it looks like the, they have very high confidence that flooding will continue. And then tomorrow, okay, so the flood event will continue from, from this evening into tomorrow morning. Very similar to what we saw today. I'm sorry, yesterday. Then Wednesday evening, well, let's say Wednesday night, for us. The western part of the state, the, we're going to have a front move through. Western part of the state, we get here about five. For us, it will get here somewhere between eleven P.M. and two A.M. Where we're going to experience, wind goes up to sixty miles an hour and the possibility of a spin-up toward that. So as it stands right now, we are preparing, we are prepared. We've had the EOC open since yesterday morning, when we were here all night last night. We'll be here all night. We'll be here through the duration of Wednesday, Thursday morning. And so just want to give you a very brief synopsis of what's going on. Thus far, we have not experienced the flash flooding like we did in fifteen. But of course, it's a long way from being over. If we do get, we could possibly get more. The worst of it started just south of us. Cherokee and Cleveland County got really hammered yesterday. They were expecting that to come across us, but luckily, we got the edge of it. If we get the brunt of this storm, we could see, that two inches could very quickly turn into four inches. If that happens, we could see significant flash flooding in, in the area. So, so, you know, I will, I will say that I appreciate all of the commissioners, you know, that they have, they have supported us, have stepped on top of this situation. I think they're with us. Mr. Westbrook's been very involved, and we'll, we should know that we appreciate that so much. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. And what I have to say, Mr. King, hearing this particular forecast, I'm going to instruct you to close our centers also tomorrow, then we will look at it again tomorrow afternoon.
And then also rural public transportation.
That's correct. Thank you. Mr. Cliff, anybody have a question, Mr. Cliff? If not, it was set for another one, Mr. Cliff. We thank you for your time and your help.
Hey, oh, and, and by the way, the, the road park situation, we have had, Mr. Luther had been working diligently on that. We do have a resolution, we believe, that has come up with that. Mr. Luther's going to be working with Jackson County Engineer. We've got a, a citizen in Macedonia who had volunteered to build the gates. Essentially, this, this project will cause, wind up costing the taxpayer nothing. So, so, so we are working on that. And thanks to Mr. Harrow's leadership, you know, that should come to fruition here very shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Gentlemen, let me say how much I appreciate working with you all. I've passed the ball all hour in Paul Lee. I couldn't ask for, it's a benefit to do their job, there's quite things to be done, and their commitment to me is committed to that. I have good friends, Sharp, and others of you that are here. It's a pleasure to work with them, and I thank you for all of you. The, that's Cliff's agenda.
Thank you.
You can't.
Cliff, I forgot to say this later, I'll be quick about it. We were compelled to close County Route Two Twelve, South of Lebanon, last week. That's the road that services the landfill operations. And that was, having to do so was a safety issue. It was also an economic issue to the various customers that transported residential waste to there. It cost them time, it cost them money. Every single one of the customers of the landfill, including all the municipalities and out-of-state contractors, were extremely cooperative because they knew that it was a safety issue, not just for people, residents in the community, but also for their revenue as well. And we're probably going to be faced with that situation again. But hopefully not, but I suspect we will. And I expect we'll still have the same level of cooperation right now. Once again, I do want to compliment all the various municipalities for, you know, stopping their operations with the residential works, pick up and delivery for that time period. And we do appreciate your assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Park. And like I said, this will get through this, and it's not our first rodeo, but we always have to be prepared for, well, we don't expect. So we thank all of you for your cooperation. Our next meeting will be February twenty-fifth, here in Chambers. Your motion was, you're, you're being that judge of soul.